Good afternoon, everybody. This is the town of Dewey Beach. Public hearing and monthly town commissioner meeting. It's being held at the Dewey Beach Life Saving Station as well as virtually via Zoom. We are here at that one Daxwell Avenue, Dewey Beach, Delaware. It's Friday, August 19th, 2022. And with that, I'd like to convene the town commissioner meeting. First, from the adoption of the agenda, there is a request made to move number 15 to number two, which is a related party associated with the current Grotto's land around Reed Street. If no one has an issue, it asks that somebody make a motion to document the agenda. And what's other amendments?
Motion to adopt the change.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opening ceremonies. You stand for collective allegiance. Thank you. Right through roll call. We do have a full house of Commissioner Bauer.
Here.
Commissioner Juzinski.
Here.
Commissioner Persinger.
Here.
And Mayor Bill Stevens here. We also have members of the town hall as well as committee members of our community here with us today. With that, I'll ask if there's any general public comments before we get into the specifics of the lineups.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go over a couple of things real quick. Formant evaluation will start September 1st, November 18th. I'm working with Lieutenant Hocker on a new form for the police department. They'll update you on our grants. We're in the second phase of the grant for Sunset Park. We're still in the first phase of the historical grant to repair the lifeguard station deck out front. And we've received the money from the state and it's been deposited into the foreign bank. It's a separate account. It'll be kept separate. Thank Gina for setting that up. Working with Denrec on the Dune Crossing weekly to keep the on the beach. Working with Denrec and the Corps on a possible temporary mat for folks that can't make it down on the beach. They can go up on the dune and still see the ocean without having to go down the other side towards the beach. The Corps of Engineer has to approve that. And we've been on a dune call with them. I think we'll get that approved. Chief's position was posted today. It'll be posted for 30 days. It's in LinkedIn indeed. And it'll be sent out to all the chiefs here in the state. Got out a little later than we thought because we worked on a new application with that. I worked with the lieutenant on that. I think the new application looks really well. Next month, looking forward, we're going to be looking at some own type of regulations and ordinance. And also businesses on the beach. We're going to try to tighten that up a little bit. I'd like to thank Gina for the audit, Kate for the new system that we have here. And for the new website. If you haven't seen our new webpage, it looks really good. The police are also working on their new webpage. Jim, Dawn and Ashley for the condition we use. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jim to give us a quick briefing on Verizon.
Jim's on mute. Mr. Didi, is you currently on mute?
I am. Am I okay now?
That's good.
Okay. As of today, we received three applications as a result of the RFI that was submitted by to CTC, which means that they have responded to the queries that the that the code that was reviewed by CTC from Verizon did not meet certain standards. That has just come in. I don't know what the status of that is. I talked to James Crane, who's our contact. The three applications that were just received are for 15 Clayton Street, 6 Collin Street and 3 Rodney Avenue. What this means now is the CTC has 10 days to review the RFI that was sent back to see that it meets the code, that is code compliant. And at that point, if it is, it's referred to us and we have 60 days to accept it or permit it just to, assuming that they comply with all the ordinance. The town would then make the necessary adjustments to give them work permits. If not, it goes back again to the RFA and the shock clock stops again. And then we start anew for another 60 days. The, we haven't received applications for 24 Collins Street and 1 St. Louis. So we're still waiting on those.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, Jim.
Kate, are, is there anyone out there for general public comment on? Can you tech, can you chat with them to see which ones they're, they're gonna, why they're here? Okay. The only other announcement that I have is that the feature placement tax was due on August 1st. Since this year has the tax due date changed from December 31st to June 1st, we're not applying penalties to accounts who are due for the current billing period. Accounts that are multiple years past due are accruing penalties from August 2nd on. But other accounts can be given a grace period. A lot of mortgage companies pay the tax out of escrow. And so they're working to get to remove the delinquencies. That and we'll keep public comment relatively loose. Kate, as we move through the process, unless it's after we've discussed a certain project, then it will close. But if anyone comes in from general, just let me know. Committee reports. Audit.
Yeah, I'm assuming Julie Johnson's not on the phone. She's not here.
She will join us during.
Okay, okay. The audit committee met. They're recommending the audit to us for approval. So we'll come back to that later on today. Should I just go?
Yeah, go right to yours, Gary.
Charter and code is, do you have any indication that Dan Nally is on the, on the line? Okay. Then I'll give the report. Charter and code met this past Monday. They feel very strongly that they would like some outside expertise to help them work through some of the details of the code. And I think the town is supportive of that as well. They're planning on meeting again on the 29th and they'll, they'll be flushing out what that proposal will look like. And it's not clear exactly how they'll assign a dollar cost to that. We may do some sort of trial run on a couple of sections of the code and see how that goes. But we'll have better idea of that after they meet on the 29th. And they can come back to us with a recommendation for our next meeting. Climate change is scheduled to meet tomorrow at 10 o'clock. I had the opportunity to watch a video of a meeting that was attended by the town manager and also by the chair of the committee. It's a group called the Resilience, Resilience and Sustainability Communities League.
Rascal.
Rascal, yes. Interesting acronym. But in any case, this is a group of people from various agencies and throughout, throughout the state. Del Dot was part of it. Denrec, the C-grant program in the state. The Center for Inland Bays was also represented as well. But they, they're coming together to help Dewey kind of work their way through this whole issue of climate change. And to talk a little bit about where the resources are available that we can get funding from and what other resources we might be able to draw upon in terms of expertise for addressing this. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Bill.
Yep, we have a follow-up Zoom on Monday with Del Dot and with DEMA to look at funding for, for beach erosion.
Those are the only updates I have.
Okay. Commissioner Bauer?
Marketing has not met, no updates there.
Commissioner Juzinski?
Same thing with infrastructure.
The only update that I had, we have, we had some turnover in the budget finance. We had a chair move to climate change and we had to remove. The other chair just got too busy with life and others have designs. But I was fortunate enough, I've interviewed different people over the last two months. And I'll bring a new chair to the next meeting for your review. And we'll rebuild that committee. That's all I have from budget finance. Next item, the general approval.
I'm so sorry.
Mayor, the investment committee's report is represented in items 13 and 14 of today's meeting.
Wonderful. Next item is the approval of July 15, 2022, monthly financial town commissioner meeting minutes. Any, do I have a motion or do we have any changes?
I moved it, we approved the minutes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is Dave. I have to abstain. I couldn't find them anywhere in my inbox. So I haven't seen them. Like it's possible somehow they got accidentally deleted, but I didn't see the names.
All right, first item, I'd like to open the public hearing. Counselor, instead of reading all of this, can we say the general? And then we'll just point to what establishment we're going to have?
I think so. I don't, I don't think we need to repeat the.
Every, yeah, okay. Just want to make sure. So I'll do it for the first time. The public hearing on an ordinance regarding conditional use permit and the application for restaurant permit compliance to construct and operate a new restaurant located at 1508 Coastal Highway, Dewey Beach, Delaware 19971, pursuant to section 25D 1A1 of chapter 185. And in accordance with the definition and requirements of a restaurant in chapter 144, section 8, subject parcel of land during Coastal Highway and Reed Avenue. There is tax parcel 3342018116.00 and lies in the RV2 zoning district.
Ask a quick question?
Yes.
Dawn's just right. We do not have a separate handout for.
And to identify this is for the new Grotto's restaurant. Is that correct? Okay. Is there anyone here from a public hearing perspective that would like to come forward and state the comments before we ask the people from Grotto's to come and vote? None and none online? Darren, is there, Sharon and Deborah, could you let us know if there is a specific or multiple properties or multiple conditional use permits that you're calling about today? Aaron? Continue, continue to text or chat with her until we figure it out. Great. She may be on mute. All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna close the public hearing. Except before I do that, we want to hear from the applicant. Just reading. I do know that we've had, we did have a few emails that we've received in town concerning various elements about this property. So we'll bring that up. I don't know if everyone received those. We can talk about it tonight. But we'll listen to members of Grotto's, just give us a little bit about the project and.
Thank you very much. We have a few visual aids and we may ask Kate to help us a little bit on the, that which is available online. First thing we're going to put up is a floor plan of the proposed new restaurant. But then I'll just go through some of the particulars and then we'll go from one drawing to another. In any event, my name is Steven Spence. I work at Bear Mandals Firm in Lewis, in Lewis office. I represent Grotto Pizza, Inc. And its property owner, which is an affiliate of Dominic Bullieri, who is the longtime owner of Grotto Pizza, Inc. Our client filed this conditional use application in May of '22, amended it in June with some additional materials to the site plan and they give explanations and minor changes. Today have with me Jeffrey Gosner, senior vice president of Grotto Pizza. And along with Mr. Clint Daniels here. And Mr. Arisha, Mr. Clint Daniels, the architect for this project. Mr. Rissel works for Panone and they're the engineers assisting with site plan and other development issues. And to the extent that there are any questions that the commissioners have about any aspect of this application, I want to make sure they're all here so they can answer any questions you might have about any part of these applications, these two matters. So the general concept is we intend to build a new Grotto Pizza restaurant at the southwest corner of Reed Avenue on Highway 1. They have applied for a conditional use to operate a new restaurant for location with a liquor license. The floor plan is there as you see it. And there's nothing in particular unusual about this floor plan. There's no entertainment proposed, no stand-up consumption areas, if you will, no stage, that sort of thing. There will be doors and it would be, I guess if we brought up one of the street elevations, that would be helpful. And we can bring up one of the elevations. That will, if you look at the elevation that we've just shown you, the corner, of course, where the Grotto Pizza sign is and the, and the swirl, that's, I was trying to think of swoop and a swirl. And I believe that those doors will, in good weather, will be able to slide back, if you will. They'll be movable doors. And then, as you see on the further down Highway 1 heading south, you'll see that there are these doors, which are garage doors, that in good weather will be able to be opened. But there will be no outside service areas, no patio, nothing unusual in that respect. But we do want to have it be as open air as possible in good weather. The, excuse me, the total seated dining inside will be 126 seats, as shown by the floor plan. There will be 17 bar seats for a total of 143 customers that can be seated at any one time in the facility. That complies with the ABCC rules about the percentage of bar seats as compared to total seating, which means that typically has to be less than 25% of the seated dining areas. The total patronage area is 2,147 square feet as a result. And is partly as a result of the new ordinance that was adopted in the last 12 months. There is no outside parking required because we're under the 4,000 square foot limit. And of course, you would ask, obviously, right now, this is the old arcade and for me, for my, for a while, a law office that I occupied until 2009. And it's generally been basically underused or not used really since 2009 when I left. In any event, the parking lot in the back, you'll see with the subsequent application we'll cover next on the agenda, the back half of the parking lot is a lot in and of itself that has been sold to Mr. and Mrs. Gosner, who hope to at some point in time in the future, subject to a process we have to go through with the town, or perhaps build a home back there. And the lot that is the subject of the application is a 10,000 square foot lot and is essentially the front half of the parking lot, if you will, toward Highway 1. And then the building is there. The, the building itself, let me bring up this site plan for a second, just to get a sense of what's up there somewhere. And if that happens to be available, the site plan, I'd be interested in bringing up just the, what I describe as page two of the map or site plan. The building is slightly over 5,000 square feet in total square footage area. And as you can see, it will sit on the majority of the parcel in terms of where it's located. That in the gray area in the back, you'll see that there is the, what I describe as the entrance for deliveries and for trash removal and the like by, on what? This will be your main access, folks. Walking section here is the landscape area in the front and the like. The, of course, the property is in the RV zoning district. Restaurants with a liquor license permitted, permitted, subject to your approval as a conditional use. There's no zoning change required. And the chapter 144 of the Dewey Code revolves around the approval of a certificate of compliance where you make representations, as Grotto's has done, as to how you intend to use it, what percentage of alcohol sales for, versus food sales you will have. And that application is part of the file in this case. There's nothing particularly unusual about this application as it relates to that. When we submitted originally, we received comments from the town as to our preliminary site plan. We provided with the revisions to that. I don't think the town has asked us for any additional corrections or changes to the site plan. The site plan has been approved by the fire marshal and it's out for approval by the Sussex Conservation District and Del Dot. Del Dot's involved because while the street, I think, is town property, Del Dot maintains it. So they have to approve our entrance because it's a change of entrance. And our engineers are working with Del Dot on that subject. And Sussex Conservation District, we are not disturbing, we're not creating a disturbance, if you will, of the area large enough to warrant a significant investigation on our part. We expect that they will approve that in due course. The, the building and all the site improvements will comply with all flood zone requirements and will be subject to, obviously Sussex County and the Dewey Building Code requirements. We're doing what I would describe as protection against flow. We're not elevating, except to the extent we have one, I think we have to elevate some of the propane tanks. But other than that, we're basically doing a design where you, you can meet code by providing for extra protections associated with infiltration of water. Now, the, the, if we can bring up one of the elevations again. This is basically the design that we intend to use for, for building permit approval and the color scheme. And generally, this is what it's going to look like when built. And if you could show us the Reed Avenue elevation, that would be helpful as well for everybody who's here. There you go. That's, that's the, no, that's the southern elevation. The Reed Avenue is to your right. There should be, well, we, we have one. Why don't we bring that up? There we go. No, that's still the, that's still Highway 1. There you go. You can generally see from that. The Reed, the Reed side elevation will be the primary entrance to that. That's the reason I brought it up. Under the Grotto Pizza sign portion on the right side of the drawing is where the main entrance will be. There's a handicap ramp, although it's not obvious from looking at that particular picture. There's a handicap ramp that leads up from there, from the western side of the parcel on Reed Avenue. And then you see the two-step elevation for the remainder. The, I think our client in particular and the engineers and architect are of the belief that this is going to be an outstanding new addition to the town. The former arcade building will be obviously demolished. And to the extent you didn't already know, the, we also intend, if we can obtain approval promptly, to demolish the old restaurant as well and make applications to redevelop that as a mixed-use property. And we'll come back to that in a minute. Based upon the expected lead time we have to have to demolish the existing building, deal with supply chain issues that we expect we'll have to navigate, and the time to build and open the new restaurant, hopefully by the spring of 2023, we're making a request of the commissioners to agree to approve this conditional use application now without referral to planning and zoning and approve the certificate of compliance application. And then upon receipt of the other final agency approvals, we would file our final site plan with the town, with the building official, and final construction plans will be submitted for the permits. The project, in our view, is not complex. Isn't unusual in the context of wanting to do, stand up a service of alcohol or stages or live music or lots of noise generation. The noise that you'll, that would typically come from air would be people eating and talking and some background music in ceiling, in ceiling speakers, not, you know, we're not trying to broadcast anything. The plan as submitted does not affect the current approved comprehensive plan because it's contemplated that RV2 would be a place for restaurant development. And it's not a significant change in land use, although interestingly enough, this was the arcade associated with the restaurant originally. Now, of course, it'll be the restaurant. But it's been Grotto's corner for as long as I can remember. And, and so my hope is that this is not so unusual that you'll be able to consider for approval now. The, the last thing I had is that a draft order was prepared and was submitted as part of the materials that are available for today's hearing. When I reviewed that briefly, I saw a couple of minor typographical errors in it, number one. So I, I prepared a black line and a revision that I was going to hand in to be part of the record. And, and to the extent that you have any questions about it or anything else having to do with the project, we, as I said, the professionals here are happy to answer those questions. If anybody from the public has any questions, we'd be glad to try to answer those as well. With your permission, I'd like to hand in to the town council the, the black line and the clean, if you will, version of it. The changes, by the way, were largely typographical as to the code section cited. It was an extra number in the citation. And we wanted to add a sentence that made it specifically clear that, that this would be a restaurant that had a right to have a liquidity. So I'll hand those up if I may. And, and then the, or anything else that you want to cover, Jeff? Oh, yes. Correct. I'll come back to that briefly. The, the reason we're asking for approval now is because we really would like to be able to demolish the old arcade building, demolish the restaurant and get the new restaurant built and operational by next summer. If, and it's nobody's fault, but if it takes, I mean, we should be applying, I think, in June. If it takes us till December, for example, if we went out the planning and zoning and back for another hearing here, the likelihood of us being able to do that is probably zero. And we were hopeful that we could substantially improve that corner between now and, if we can. And anything else on that? And now we just set a both architect or engineer here. If you have any questions for them about any aspect of this plan, please feel free to ask them or ask me and I'll try to provide an answer.
Great, thank you. I'll send it out to the commissioners for comments, questions.
I'm speaking on behalf of emails that I received. There were some questions about how carryout was going to be handled and you didn't address that. I saw it in the picture, but if you could address that specifically.
I want to let Jeff answer that question.
Just keep your voice up.
Never been able to speak soft. Let me go over here. On most service days during that point in time, during the daytime, when these are open, we actually can let people walking through and walking into there. But then we will also have an entrance right here, which is right in where you basically can enter and mix surgery. So to go back in the restaurant before it would affect anybody, the first place that would affect as a residential lot would be me. So you have a good, I won't say 100 people, yeah, 100 people. Anybody else would be affected by that. And everything else, we're under the square. And I guess I also would say, where are, he had approval to be open.
Grandfather.
Grandfather, I think it's until 2:30. This is the 1:00 hour. I mean, that is staying within.
Restaurant restrictions.
Restaurant restriction right now. We don't plan on being open later than that.
And would, and would the carryout close, the carryout would not remain open after the restaurant is closed?
Oh, no, no.
It'd be same office?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Juzinski?
I didn't have any additional questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Persinger?
Yeah, oh, sorry. So there's not a carryout window. It's just the carryout. Okay, okay.
No, it's just the doors here and they.
Very questions because I didn't think that was a pass-through window.
No, no, that's just a separate window.
In the, in the, in this picture, it very much looks like these individuals are ordering at a carryout window.
Oh, I think that more of them just a person going there to, oh, okay. See, we're here to say that. No, you're not. That is not a carryout window.
Thank you. That was, that was my mate. That's why I thought it could remain open and the restaurant would be closed.
No, no, probably realized that.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yeah, Jeff, really liked the design of this. I think it's going to look great and it's going to be a nice asset for the town. It's, it's nice and new and fresh. My only concerns, you know, from a zoning standpoint is, you know, I'm not sure, and Gary, maybe you can help us out on this, but you know, is, or we meet, they're meeting all the conditions and code that we have today for, for a property like that. I mean, it's a, it's the same property just across the street. Is there any way to keep, like you, you sell pizza after 1:00 now. I know that, I know that for a fact. But so is there any way to keep pass? But uh, so uh, is there any way to keep past 1:00 if we go to that property?
But if they're not asking, they're not asking.
We're not, we're not asking. We, we, I mean, if, if we were to try to ask for put that aside for a moment, because we're not, it would have to be a board of adjustment issue and that's not really on the table. That's just something, something we talked about, but the, the company concluded there was just no point going down that road.
Mr. Dades or Miss things, do you have any comments or questions, anything you'd like to say in regards to this project?
All right. Initially, there were a few areas that we discussed that needed some corrections and so forth, and they have complied beautifully. So it appears to be quite code compliant.
And A, just as a, okay, Garrett.
Could you review the, the timing again, um, in terms of what your desired timeframe would be? And, and what would be the implications if this were referred to planning and zoning? Were there September, we think there'll be a September 10 meeting, um, which would then come back to us again at the, after that. Zoom away. I, I think the fastest timeframe, if we went to P and Z, would be, we would take this up again in October. And how would that affect your timeframe?
All is to demolish the building right after liberty, to start with, and the second one after liberty day. One of the big problems is the So obviously, until we go through and have our permit, we wouldn't want to start doing any of the ordering and going through that process. So if we really don't get this up out of the ground, you know, by the beginning of October, it'd be extremely difficult for us to be open by May because of all of it. We're not in a normal, an abnormal environment that we have been in the past. It's getting a little bit better, still crazy. I don't know the whipping. I mean, it's crazy for the time period it's taking to get everything for us, um, our restaurant equipment to work. And ready to go past that point. It's, we have tried to miss everything that we can to mitigate some of that. Uh, for example, we had, uh, originally had a steel arch that was going through the whole building. We actually changed that to a metal steel because it was faster to get that um, in time. So we have tried to do everything that we can, but we are still at the mercy of, of so many outside vendors that it, it really is something if we don't have this going by then, the, the chance, it diminishes rapidly, the chance must be We want to take that down. We want to get that removed as, as quickly as possible. And this one removed as quickly as possible to start. I don't really restaurant that we have right now, it's, it's, it's really dilapidating and to have that isolated, removed.
But it's a building with high maintenance issues. It's definitely that.
From, from my opinion, you know, Grotto has been part of this community for as long as I can remember, uh, good part of the community. Uh, Miss things commenting on the fact that they have complied with all the areas. You know, happy to see this addition. You know, I've walked past your old law firm a thousand times, wondering what the heck is did those fish die in there or did, uh, what happened with that?
There's a nice piece of artwork in there that's going to get destroyed.
Um, uh, and Fred, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is, it would have to be unanimous for this to go through. And if not, it goes to planning zoning, or is it, am I wrong on that?
Well, you, you have the option of not referring it to planning and zoning.
Right.
But that would, in my view, be killing the application. I don't think that's under consideration. The code makes it clear that if a uh, change to an existing conditional use is deemed to be insignificant unanimously by council, that you, you have the authority to approve it uh, without making that, without sending it to the planning commission. This is an entirely new uh, restaurant on a, on a different property than it currently exists. I, I'm not aware of any precedent for concluding that that you have the authority to approve that without sending it to, to the planning commission.
I have a suggestion.
Spencer would like to comment?
Well, uh, I even, I was of the impression, on the impression, excuse me, you're looking at 18573 of the code having to do with administrative provisions. That now, those code sections are driven by the, the general concept of how do you change zoning? And then the conditional use provisions are what I would describe as the way they're set up, they say, if you're going to do a conditional use, you have to follow C procedures as a zoning application. And so the change, the initiation of change description in 18573A is typically driven or focused on, excuse me, a change in zone. But because the conditional use provisions have to go through the same process, I was of the view that that section, which I can read, it's very short, says initiation of change, the town commissioners may from time to time amend, supplement, or change by ordinance the boundaries of the districts or the regulations here and establish by his own. Uh, any such amendment may be initiated by resolution of the town commissioners or by petition of any property owner addressed to the town commissioners. Petitions for change or amendment shall be informed and filed in a manner prescribed by the town commissioners. That's simple enough. And then it says B. Uh, report from planning commission before taking any action on a proposed amendment, supplement, or change. Town commissioners shall submit the same to the planning commission for its recommendations and report unless, here's the key phrase, by unanimous vote, the town commissioners present, present, excuse me, decide that the change proposed is not significant. So I think that's read in the context of multiple application, both zoning change and conditional use. I don't think it's exclusive to zoning, and I don't think it discount or that it's not applicable in the context of conditional use. Um, and we tried to make the point that what we're doing in the context of building a restaurant in RP, RB2 is not in and of itself significant. Um, because it's permitted, except for you have to get a conditional use. And the conditional use is primarily driven on effect on the community, size and shape. You know, whether you have to have provide parking, the, the percentage of uh, sales of alcohol, et cetera. The seating arrangement, permanency of that. If you look at the conditional use conditions for a restaurant, you see they're all about trying to restrict it from becoming a bar. I mean, that's really what it is. And this is nowhere near that. I mean, this is not even close to being a bar. So we thought that it would be appropriate to request unanimous consent under that section if we could. I realize it's not our choice insurance, but that's why we're here.
What is the existing square footage?
Of the existing restaurant?
Existing, yes.
Jeff, you can answer it.
I can answer the patron rate of the patrons who are included of the existing restaurant is um, 97 square feet, patron space. Um, the restaurant itself is almost double that. This restaurant, the new restaurant, it's basically 2,197, I believe.
That's so, the question is how, how do we apply the significance? Since we've always had the re-
Well, significantly smaller.
So, yes, thank you. Um, you took my punchline.
But we're not trying to make a big addition either.
Right.
Anyway, that was our viewpoint, is why we could come in even asking for that. We thought that it was appropriate to do so under that section.
Commissioner Persinger, what are your thoughts?
I would tend to agree with the, the town attorney in terms of, I'm not aware of a precedent for this sort of thing where we're you know, tearing down a building and then constructing a totally new building. I don't think that we have faced a situation like that where we had avoided the conditional use process, the full conditional use process. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just bothered by that. I, I'm not, um, I'm not sure in my mind whether or not we should go ahead with this. I think the other issue, um, that I worry about is the issue of public comment. You know, part of the value of a conditional use process is to give the public adequate opportunity to express their thoughts about, um, you know, a proposed, a proposed restaurant like this. And clearly, they have an opportunity to make public comment now, but you know, when it goes through the planning and zoning process, that opens up the opportunity for even more public comment. Um, and then it would come back to us for another public hearing. And, and again, there's another opportunity to public comment. It's difficult to get information out about something like this. I mean, there's been a lot of, you know, rumors, discussion, you know, back channels about uh, something's going to happen with the Grotto and, you know, what's going to happen and nobody really knows. And so, you know, now we have some public plans and I just wonder if the public has had enough opportunity to take a look at those and, and make some judgments and offer some comments either for or against if, if they have some thoughts about it. So um, I'm interested in hearing what other commissioners have to say with respect to this proposal. But I'm, I'm a little bit on the fence right now.
So I, I have, I have a question, and just because I'm trying to make sense of the code. If they were asking to knock down the current building and build a new building in the same place, would that still have to go to planning?
I believe it should.
It would, unless you all were to determine that it was not a significant change. Um, it would need to go to the planning commission. It may need to go to the planning commission for a second reason, and that's just due to the size of the of the um, construction project. It might have a site plan approval requirement. Not sure. Don't is not sure. So I, I, I think our history has been that were something like that to occur, it would require a referral to the planning commission. For the reasons that were stated by Commissioner Persinger to get public comment on the redesign, presumably, they're not going to build something that is exactly the same as what they took down. And you had, you heard some discussion about whether there's going to be a a takeout window and trash and fences and plantings and things like that would all be typically the subject of um, public comment.
Well, um, I have a comment.
Then you go first.
If, um, you said PMZ is meeting on September 10th?
Correct.
In order to speed this up, let's say we send it to planning and zoning, I wouldn't be opposed to having a, a council meeting eight days after that.
We're currently scheduled to meet, I believe, on the 17th, so we just have to move it back.
Or just add the agenda, add it to the agenda, knowing that we're
Add it to the agenda, knowing it's going to happen.
I, I.
Sorry, Steve. So, the council, I think, is about to mention something about public notice.
So, um, i- in order to schedule that meeting, you're going to need to give ample notice, and the planning commission's going to need to give ample notice. So we may have enough time to add something like that to, we probably don't have time to add it to the, we, we're going to need, I think it's uh, 15 days' notice. It's going to be very close as to whether or not we could get it on that agenda.
On which agenda?
Uh, the planning, the planning.
Got 20. We've got enough.
We got to get it in the paper. It's got to get published.
So I'll, I'll just say, give my two cents on this. I, yeah, we have the time. We, we have the ability to take a vote. If the vote passes unanimously, then it passes unanimously. Am I correct? All right. I, I, again, this isn't a new restaurant coming in town, and while it is moving its location, it's moving across the street. And I don't see that as significant in terms of the effect on the town of Dewey Beach. The code was meant to protect the residents and, and those that come, come to us to make sure that no one's infringing upon the rights of others. Going from the north side to the south side does not seem to me to be that significant of an infringement and uh, not using uh, the, the Grotto's word. It is a little bit of an eyesore and having a much nicer restaurant as we, you know, continue to build in town, it's not a bad thing. So I, I don't, I understand the requirement. This has been notified directly. We did have the newspaper, and I believe we're also sent that out as mailer to everyone. So I do believe that we, we've given significant amount of uh, notice of this change.
So question, did we send a notice to each of the um, property owners with boundaries within 200 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, the question that I rose came from those property owners. So that was their question. I represented it for them.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Oh. Before I ask for a motion, or is there anyone, anyone for public comment? Bring them in, please.
Hello?
Hello, David.
Hey, uh, so I, I just wanted to speak because my HOA had written in about the takeout window, and we received the response from the town that uh, don't worry, it's going to go to planning and zoning, and you'll have ample time to speak at planning and zoning and then another town commissioner meeting. And now, t- today, they're looking to do, waive the planning and zoning, which is very unusual. It just doesn't happen. Nalu, Starboard Chlor, everything comes before the town and it goes to planning and zoning. Is that planning and zoning, you usually get the conditions that they're trying, I, I, I don't know if they're trying to avoid or whatever. And I mean, I love Grottos. I eat, my daughter asks for Grottos every day. I live here full-time. I would love Grottos to be open year-round. Uh, I, I'm usually at Grottos every day. I love it. Uh, my HOA's issue or concern was that takeout window, we wanted to close at 11 because right now you have Grottos that's open, I think till 2:00 AM, 2:30, but there's a takeout area. And at the takeout area, the people congregate inside and there's no noise to us. But with a takeout window, the concern is they'll go across the street to Sharky's or they'll go to Our Yard, or they'll just congregate outside on Reed Avenue. And i- it's the concern, and I, I think planning and zoning would get a lot of feedback, and there might be other conditions. Once you move across the street, you look, you have, you start it fresh because the current location keeps all the conditions. Grottos could get the approval to move across the street, which I support. I want the Grottos across the street. I love Grottos. But they could then take the restaurant that's there now and keep it as a restaurant and keep the current condition. So I, I think it's, makes sense. You could do a fast-track uh, hearing as Commissioner Bauer said. Send it to planning and zoning early September, and then it could go right back to the commissioners. You could advertise both public hearings at the same time. And just get it done on a speedy basis to make everyone happy.
May I respond? Uh, we don't, we don't respond to public. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moskowitz.
Thank you.
If you have a question, if you have, if you have any comments.
Um, Mr. Moskowitz, I think perhaps you didn't hear the earlier discussion where I brought up your concerns about the takeout window.
I don't know if you can hear.
You can hear.
So. Again.
I think I'm, I'm basically willing to, to go with an expedited process, but you know, based on the initial from our, our town attorney, um, this seems to set a new precedent. And I'm not sure that we're justified in setting a new precedent like this. You know, if we can, if we can get P and Z to consider this on the 10th, you know, I'm certainly willing to do whatever expedited uh, hearing after that to get this going as fast as possible, but I, I really believe that, uh, you know, and, and as part of a, you know, conditional use process and the P and Z involvement, there can be conditions that get um, im- imposed, you know, additional conditions. And, and those happen because you get the benefit of additional input from uh, both from P and Z members, um, as well as members of the public who may become aware that this is happening. I think there's benefit to the town of, of continuing and, you know, extending this process a bit. And I, again, I really don't think I really want to set a precedent here.
And do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move. I'll move. This is Dave Jazinski. Um, I'll make a motion that we refer the ordinance to planning and zoning.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Yeah, can we amend that to try to expedite this as quick as possible?
Sure. I'll accept that amendment. Sure.
Your second again?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Not hearing any. All right. So we'll make sure that gets the lead uh, notice on both for the planning and zoning as well as the next commissioner meeting. And um, we'll set up a expedited meeting then. Given the right timeframe. Is that, is that good with you guys? Thank you. All right. All right, let's uh, let's move on to the next item. Item 15. Um, item 15 was discuss and possibly vote to refer to the planning commission an application to rezone tax map parcel 334 dash 20 dash 18 dash 115 dot 00 located at 106 Reed Avenue Dewey Beach from Resort Business RB2 to Resort Residential RR along with the proposed ordinance to rezone said parcel and to amend the comprehensive plan map accordingly. Brought up in the last, I don't, you want to make a comment?
No, I was waiting for.
Okay.
I'm just brought up in the last section.
Yes, that the app, prior applicant is, has purchased that.
Yes, that the prior applicant is, has purchased that, that piece of property is looking to rezone. This is, and from a from an agenda perspective, we have discussion, but we'd be ultimately just sending it to planning and zoning for the recommendation.
I think we can just expedite this. I'll move that we vote to send this to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Stated in the beginning of the meeting, we have several properties, restaurants here that are here for conditional use. We will go and order that presented on the agenda. And I'll just say these statements out loud, Starboard Raw, Starboard Lighthouse Code. Woody's Dewey Beach Country Club, Jimmy's Grill, Dewey Beer Company, and the Dewey Post. And finally, Mama Maria's. Just to set the framework, you know, if this all needs to be unanimous from, from the council's perspective, whatever we decide is a, is it a permanent conditional use that that applicant will have on that space? You know, need to look at it from not only the current property, but you know, the future property or future owner or future use because that will stay that way. So, these changes could be significant in terms of, from the town, the town perspective. It could be. I'm not saying that they are. The applicant, the applications have been filed. And therefore, even if it goes to planning and zoning, the current date, you, you would continue to be able to operate and you will tell me when I'm wrong like you usually do. Until it is settled one way or the other. So, even if it's past the October 31st, you'll still be able to operate your organizations. And we also have the ability to extend moratorium. We saw that today Governor Carney did extend another 30 days on the emergency action. We do have other things that we can look at as commissioners. They're trying to define or redefine non-conforming versus conforming, possibly looking at the parking requirements as well as passing an ordinance allowing this to happen. So, that is something that that we can take, that, that we can take on. As you know, Gary, you know, Gary and I, we don't, we don't bend the rules and, you know, but we can change them through ordinances down in the future. So, before we go through another three or four hour process in each of these locations and public comment, if anyone, commissioner, is, feels strongly of, you know, that you're gonna just say no, that this needs to go planning, zoning, it might be helpful to have that discussion ahead of time. Because then we can save 27, 37, 30 people, audience, time here. So, if there is anyone that's just gonna say no, then please let, please let us know. I'm not seeing any.
You, you think for all of them?
Well, if, no, if you're, yes, if you're gonna say no to all, if you just think all of you should go planning and zoning, then I don't wanna waste anybody's time. But then we will proceed.
Okay. Yeah, clarification. I mean, it's possible that some of these may not need to go to planning and zoning and some may. So, what are you kind of asking us to do here? Are you asking us on each one just to comment upfront on whether we think?
No, no, no. I, I just wanted, I just wanted to make, to eliminate the possibility that somebody, one of the five wanted to completely go to planning and zoning. But I do want us to go there for, go through and discuss each of the projects and either send it to planning and zoning or approve it. But it has to be unanimous. That's why I'm saying one person wanted it to go. There's no reason to waste anyone else's time.
Okay. All right. Well, let's just start with the Starboard Raw since that's first.
As we initially stated, we talked about not having to repeat all of the zoning codes. So, we will open up the public hearing in regards to Starboard Raw. Is anybody in the public here to discuss Starboard Raw? We're online. Yes. Yeah.
Please.
Thanks. My name is Alex Pyres. I'm one of the applicants. But even as to myself, this is one of the most serious matters we've had in front of the town in decades. These are permanent additions to property that involves not only food, but most of them alcohol, which is both town regulated, state regulated, and federally regulated. It's a really serious matter. There's a lot that's going on here. First of all, some people are grandfathered, some people are not. There needs to be a finding on that. Some people have the Fire Marshal's certified statement as to what their capacity is. There can't be two different capacities. It can only be one. And what he says it is, which is drives patron space, which, and then he has a division that he makes, and that tells you what you can have based upon patron space. It can't be a separate number. It makes no sense. What are we gonna self-police? That's the case. If we're gonna do it that way, the entire road parking lot is going to be a patio. So, these all have to go to planning and zoning. I have one of the simplest ones. I own the property. That's another reason. Some of these people don't own the property that they made an application for. You can't do that. Any applicant who has signed it, is not the owner, doesn't have the right to bind the owner. It's not the law. The law is you need the landlord. Because the landlord has the rights, not the lesssee, not the tenant. The rights run with the property and the property is owned. There are no simple applications here, and I know all these people who are involved. Mine is really simple. I happen to own the property and I happen to have a non-grandfathered conditional use, you know, conditional use they got from you. And I'm adding a very small addition, but I think mine needs to be sent. And I'll tell you why. There's lenders involved. I happen to be a banker myself. We need to find out, even for myself, what the Fire Marshal says my patron space is. How much patron space there is inside and out. Am I the owner? If I'm the owner, I need to sign that. And then, am I grandfathered, am I not? And then, once planning and zoning has that hearing and people comment upon that individual one, and you made a good point, then they can make a recommendation back to you. Your job is really easy. You'll have the recommendation. Every time we go fast, we regret it. Every time we, we tried to race with the hotel, it turned out to be a 10-year problem. Because once you give someone a right, you cannot take it back. And I'm speaking for not only myself, for mine, but for all the applicants. I don't think we should do that. There's no public need for it. You can run your outside service. Monty can, I can, anybody else can. And definitely all winter if you want. Planning and zoning can meet, and they can do three of these at a time, and they can do it over a short period of time, or even two of them at a time. Have them use the same standards, come to the same conclusions, and give you guys a recommendation based upon this is what we found to be the actual facts, and we have the landowner's signature. We have all the steps there, and then you guys can decide. But to do it now and do it piecemeal is wrong. Because what's gonna end up is gonna be a lawsuit. And the first thing the lawsuit's gonna say, and by coincidence, for those who don't know me, I happen to be a lawyer too, they're gonna say, right off the start, everybody was not treated the same. The town put them in two pots based upon what? Based upon what you thought was obvious, that doesn't make it true. You have no certification as to any of these. You only have the applicant's word. What good is that? What good is that in the court of law? I think we should slow down, go to planning and zoning. You've got counsel right here. He knows what the rules have to be. He can help them and they can make their simple decisions. My gut is you'll get five or six of these back of the recommendation of yes, and three or four of them, you're gonna no. That's the way I think it should be done. You guys got to do what you're gonna do, but to do it piecemeal like this, some yeses and some no's, it's a mess. It's a mess waiting to happen. And there's no need for it. Thank you.
Thank you. As we still on number two in the discussion of Starboard Raw. Is any, Mr. Montgomery, would you like to? You'd like, you don't have to.
Say this. We know that the state government, we know that the governor, we know that everyone has been very much in favor of this. It's been an operation for three years. We like it. I don't argue that there's some fine tuning that will be, need to be done by the town to ensure the future and things like that. But with Starboard Raw, we're a non-significant change. We've changed absolutely nothing. We've put four tables on an existing deck that we lease that seat people. There's no bar space, there's no anything. So, to me, ours is a non-significant change. Therefore, as it says to go to planning and zoning, should not go to planning and zoning, and we just ask to continue seating a total of 16 diners, four, four tops in front of our existing year-round restaurant.
Ms. Montgomery, just clarification. You, you do not own properties. That is something, you do not own. Commissioners, any questions?
So, you, you don't own the property. But I know we've had situations like this in the past where someone would come to us with a conditional use application and they get agreement from the owner that what they want to do is appropriate and get sign off from that owner is that feasible and. Yeah, we have, we have agreements from the owner. It's, it was not requested, but it's easy enough to get the landlord to provide a permission, so to speak. The, the draft ordinance that was put together for this says that the applicant will continue to comply with existing conditions associated with their establishment. His conditions are. Do we have, this question in the town, do we have a conditional use approval to point to that specifies those? Does, does the town know what those conditions are? It's gonna be in the ordinance. It seems like there is content to that.
Ms. Hanks, could you go to a microphone, please?
So, as she's answering, I don't think the question is related to the area beyond the four corners of the existing Starboard Raw. The question I think that Mr. Persinger is asking is what are the conditions under which the Starboard Raw operates within its footprint?
With that, we would have to look up the actual ordinance when it came to the Starboard Raw, and I'm not prepared for that. But his outside expansion was simply due to the COVID that was all temporary, and there was no specific requirements by the town other than it had to meet the governor's requirement.
I do, I have a question either from Ms. Hanks or anyone who might have the institutional memory to remember this, but we had a somewhat similar request from Mama Maria years ago when they wanted to put a few chairs and tables outside their front door. It wasn't a large number. It was basically just a few chairs and tables outside of their front door on Route 1. Does anyone know when they did that, if we sent that to planning and zoning, or did we, or did we determine that it was insignificant?
I'm pretty sure that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't recall a situation where we have had a conditional use application and we have made, at least in my time on the council, we had made a judgment that that request is insignificant. And correct me if I'm, anyone else remembers differently, but that's, that's my revelation.
Mr. Dides.
We had a similar situation that occurred back when we had the Dewey kebab and we allowed them to have tables out there. The difference was it was insignificant in change. It, but there was no service, so they could come out and, you know, and sit there. That was something that we thought was insignificant. We allowed that as well. On the Mama Maria's, I'm, I'm almost 100% positive, I shouldn't say 100, but that you all, as commissioners, approved it without sending the planning commission.
That contradicts.
Well, I.
Ms. Hanks.
As I recall, as a follow-up, as I recall, that was Scully's. I may be mistaken, but it was originally Scully's. And there were conditional uses with Scully's because we had to talk to them about amplified music and guitar playing at one point to, that was not permissible.
It was referenced for Mama Maria's. There had ended up being an ordinance number 750 that gave them, Mama Maria's, allowance to expand a little bit out on the front porch and also on the sign. But it went to the planning commission on January 19th, 2019. So, it did go to the planning commission before approval for this expansion of an existing part of Mama Maria's on February 9th, 2019.
I stand corrected, Don.
Sorry.
That's fine. It may have been an incidence though, and it might have been Scully's where there was a restaurant that was changing from a pasta restaurant to an ice cream parlor or something, something like that. I can't remember. I mean, a number, a number of times we get applications that require us to make this judgment. I think on one occasion, the judgment was that the change was insignificant. On the others, the referrals to planning commission took place.
I hear the friend, but if I understood what was just said correctly, the addition of tables in which service was provided on top of Mama Maria's patio required to go to planning and zoning on the surface, I don't see how that's different than Raw. I'm just.
Well, and that, I'm, and I'm not arguing with that conclusion. I think that the, what's inherent in a conditional use is that what we're saying is one rule doesn't work for all. We consider restaurants to be permissible pursuant to a conditional use process typically. And what we're supposed to take into consideration during that process is the unique and, and independent characteristics of that particular property, the proximity of residences, perhaps public safety issues with, with traffic, all kinds of things that might be unique to that property. So, one rule, one size doesn't fit all when it comes to restaurants. So, that's, that's the inherently, that's what justifies the conditional use process for restaurants.
So, Mr. Mayor, may I, may I make another comment?
Of course.
So, thinking through this, I think, I think there's a sense in the town that the public wants everybody to be treated equitably, all applicants. And looking through these, all applicants are, all these applications are of varying degrees of significance. Probably the one that we're, we're currently discussing is one of the most insignificant ones that we have just because of the number of tables. However, we have a precedent where we made a similar applicant go to planning and zoning for a few tables out front. And my thought process around this is we want the public to trust that everyone has to adhere to the same process. So, my thinking at this point on this, and this is going to what you asked me earlier, is that planning and zoning needs to hear all of these, listen to what the public has to say, develop conditions and recommendations, and send those recommendations back to us. I think that for us to say that, you know, one is insignificant and another one isn't, I, I, I think it's just gonna result in problems where people don't think that everyone is being adhered to that, to the same standard. So, that's where I'm at.
Is there a legal definition of significant versus insignificant?
No, I think if there was a better, if, if there was a, if there was a better word, it would appear in the, in the statute than significant. Unfortunately, that's, it's, it's similar to whether something is reasonable or unreasonable. It depends on your perspective.
Thank you.
So, we can, let, let's just take, take a pause for a second, take a step back. Raw was first because it was the first application in and by far the least you could.
Wasn't that, I got up here first.
With the least amount of significance terms and overall change to the operation. The precedent has been set for this to go to planning and zoning. I don't know how and that we're going to look at that precedent for the raw. I don't know how we do not send all of the other applicants to planning and zoning. So, back to the, just to reiterate, all of you that have these establishments in place right now can continue to use them as is. The, the moratorium of October 31st, if it does end up going past that before it's when a commitment from us is that if it goes past that from planning and zoning, then we'll extend that as needed so that your, your business isn't hurt in any way. Do you have anything you want to say here?
Well, yeah, I'm just wondering if, if in fact we end up passing this along to PMZ. I would like to pass it, pass these things along with a couple of additional comments. And again, this. And again, this is with respect to treating it like, like there's a certain set of conditions in the code that relate to outdoor services. And I would like to see a specific reference to those provisions with one eighty-five, twenty-five, D one, eighty-three. We have put it specifically in other approvals of outside service areas. And in one, it should be involved and we can treat these consistently. We have also, I'd like planning design to consider the issue of smoking in the outdoor service areas. In the most recent approval, conditional use approval for starboard claw, that was one of the conditions that was imposed. And this is kind of a general question, not necessarily for P and Z, but all of these applications increase capacity. And one of the questions that a member of the public raised with me is, does that have any implication on the provision of restroom facilities? And I don't know how that's governed and who makes that determination. Is there some formula that we use based on the number of patrons? But if that could be addressed, perhaps it could be addressed in the P and Z hearings, I think that would be helpful.
The other things, one of the things that Commissioner Bauer, that in order for you to go through, that the ABC also has the approval as well as the fire marshal in terms of what's happening. So again, the addition of bathrooms. Mr. Paris referenced in terms of the parking and the overall square footage and having two different ways to do it, I think that needs resolved. In addition, going down to planning and zoning is that if there is a third party owner, that's the owner and operator are two different, there should be a sign off process. So that they're, they're all in agreement before that conditional use could be applied for.
Yeah, the conditional use stays with the property, not the tenant.
And just one other comment, and that is we have draft ordinances for all of these things. The one that I focused on is the one for starboard brawl where it says the applicant will continue to apply, comply with its existing conditions associated with their establishment. I, I think this is an obligation for the town in the back to figure out what those obligations are. What's the basis for those obligations is there was specific ordinance that they're tied to. And, you know, there are other drafts, draft ordinances for certain other applications where the specific ordinance is referenced. That makes sense to me. I think we should make this as specific and clear as possible. So I think the town has a little bit of work to do in making sure that those, those issues are covered.
A question, do we post this here in the back? I think their situation is a little different in that they've taken over an existing property, operating it in the same footprint as the same, a similar type business, different menu, obviously, and all, but how have we treated those in the past? If you've purchased a building and you, that already has a conditional use, there's no expansion, there's no extra tables. You're taking over an existing business. Is, is that a brand new conditional use? The conditional use stays with the owner.
I guess my comment on that, Paul, would be that, you know, under the COVID restrictions, when people were allowed to go into the out, you know, the outside, that, that continues. And so if by them putting tables out right now, it's not, they're not violating anything within North Town Code.
Right, but I'm thinking within, they have the CO to operate as it is.
And we don't want to lose sight of these chapter forty-four requirements that apply to restaurants. And when there is a transfer of ownership, there, there does have to be an application because we need to know who the owner is. And the owner needs to be presented with the copy of the file and, and has to be told and advised, these are the conditions of your operation. So a new owner can't just come in and say, well, I didn't understand it. Here were any, any unique restrictions on my operation. Chapter one forty-four does require some type of interaction with the.
But, and that does require a public hearing. Is that correct?
Chapter one forty-four requires a public hearing.
I, I would be hard pressed to say that we have followed that, which is in the past. But I, if it's in the code, we should be following.
We combine the, we consider these, we combine the public hearings for conditional uses and, and one forty-four. But if there's a change, so you're, you're saying in cases where there's a transfer of ownership and no, that's possible.
We've never done it.
Oh, back, try to reel, reel it back in. So there's a few things came up. I think what we're looking for now is to pass or not do anything in regards, I'm sorry. We need to go, to go through each line item and send that to planning and zoning. If that is what we're going to do, correct? Or can we do a blanket, send, send all but, and we'll talk about, do we post separately?
Sorry, I was.
You were reading?
I was reading this, yeah. And I've got an answer to a earlier question, but.
Go first.
Well, the town manager is authorized, when you have a change of ownership, to make the determination that no hearing is required. If, as you all are confronted with these same questions, whether the changes are not, not deemed to be substantial. Like you, you don't change the patron area, you don't change your hours of operation in a significant way, then the town manager can avoid that, that need.
I'm sorry, and then your question. From a process perspective, I think we've all agreed that these are going to planning and zoning. So can we make a motion to have items?
What point of order, Mr. Townsend, I think we have to have the public hearing on everything. I don't know if we can open it up altogether, but don't we have to have a public hearing on each one that we refer before we refer it?
So I think we are considering that we're having one public hearing. So we, we could invite anyone who is here to comment, to make their comments on any of the proceedings before we close the public hearing. But the public hearing is required only if you're going to make a determination. I mean, technically, it's only required only if you're going to make a finding that the changes are not significant.
Oh, okay, alright.
So i- if you make up the finding that the changes are significant and a referral is necessary, you're really not legally required to hold a public hearing at all. But add a courtesy to those people who are here, who may wish to speak or online virtually, you may want to invite those comments right now. But they will have another opportunity to speak before planning and they will have another opportunity to speak.
I think that is, it's, I think it's a better use of everyone's time for those that are here online. This will be going to planning and zoning. It will be scheduled through planning and zoning. It will be notified. Use your comments there because then from what you tell planning and zoning will come back to us in terms of recommendations. Unless you just want to be heard. So with that, I'll open up if anybody would like to, to be heard at this point in time. Sure.
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Moskowitz.
May I speak?
Yes.
Okay, to Commissioner Bauer, Dewey Post will continue, they should continue their occasional use to Mr. Deeds. Dewey kebab wanted outdoor seating, but the town was willing to consider it at that time, but the landlord wouldn't approve it, so the town never brought that up. So there wasn't outdoor seating at that time approved for Dewey kebab. For Mama Maria's, there was that, there was three hearings. We had the commissioners, public hearing, the P and Z and commissioners, and it was an inefficient use of the applicant's time, I felt. And I would actually be in support, like I have no skin in the game, although didn't see great things for Dewey. And to me, I'm in support of the commissioners considering it because you already have the roadmap for what to do. And it's just, it's really the town should have prepared the commissioners better with that roadmap of what always gets done. And that's why I sent the email early in the week. It's the same conditions all the time. The outdoor service area is kept clean while, I had one additional request, the outdoor service area is kept clean while in operation and a required end of night cleanup of the area because if you've seen the news, a lot of issues are happening in places like New York City. Because they don't require a cleanup and that would be a good condition to have. But every other condition, you always give the same conditions to Nalu, Starboard Claw and Mama Maria's in the past. So I, I, I don't see why you can't do it now. If you send it to planning and zoning, you send it, you still have to October thirty first. But I, I would just get it, if you know the conditions, you should really get it done now, but it falls to the town. I, I mean, in this process, I've heard the town lose an application for two months, not even apologized, then lose the application again for a week. I, I mean, the town should better prepare the commissioners with these ordinances with all the conditions from Mama Maria's, Nalu and Starboard Claw. And I would hope they do that for planning and zoning, so this way planning and zoning is prepared because it should be a simple process. I, I mean, from what I've seen, it's always the same conditions and I'll just read them out loud very quickly. It's a few conditions and then I'll go.
Well, Mr. Moskowitz, th- those conditions are conditions that appear in the code that apply to outside service areas. So I think it's become a practice of the planning commission and, and the commissioners to include those in the ordinances that approve the conditional uses. However, if they didn't, they would still apply because they are the law. So it's really a stylistic.
Well, not, not all the conditions, and I'll give you an example, that smoking is prohibited in the outdoor deck. That was put on Nalu and then I almost forgot about it for Starboard Claw and then I suggested it and the neighbors as well, and they put it for Starboard Claw. So you think that should be prohibiting smoking is just good practice, is prohibited in most places in Dewey when they can. So something like that you should be consistent with because it's not fair to stay Nalu and Starboard Claw. You can't have smoking, but you can have it elsewhere. So, but, but all I'm asking for is perhaps get Mama Maria's outdoor provisions, get Nalu's and get Starboard Claws. And when you present it to planning and zoning, it should be very easy what to do. Because I, I'm very disappointed. I was hoping this would be approved. I'm in favor of all the outdoor dining. I think it's made Dewey great. And it's been a great thing for the area, so.
Thank you, Mr. Moskowitz. Just to, just to reiterate, nothing changes. No one is going to lose their outdoor seating as a result of this going to planning and zoning, just to make that clear to everyone else.
If, if they, if they in good faith pursue their approvals, then.
And they have. So that being said, now, is there any other public comment? Okay, that being said, can we bucket these items and go to planning?
One motion.
One motion. Yeah, Garrett.
I'll make a motion.
We, we need to refer to each business. Is that correct?
I think just a reference to the business without a reference to the ad, address is sufficient. I mean, it, it's just a referral.
Okay, I, I, I move that we refer the following conditional use applications to planning and zoning for their consideration. Harvard Law. Harvard. Widdies. Dewey Beach Country Club.
Lighthouse Cove.
Lighthouse Cove. Jimmy's Grill. Dewey Beer Company.
Dewey Post.
Dewey Post. And Mama Maria's.
And did you mention Dewey Beer?
I did.
Okay, sorry.
I'll second that. Can I add something to it?
Of course.
Can we put a timeline for P and Z to get this back to us so we don't stall anybody from, from their plans?
No. I mean, there, there, you, you might have the authority, I know some jurisdictions, I'm not sure about this one, have the authority to take something back from planning and zoning if after a lengthy period of time, it's determined that they're not making progress. Might be sixty days, but I think they've got, they've got sixty days to get something done.
I'd just like to see it come back to us within the next sixty days. Humanly possible.
Also, I would add, I think the starboard has, has, for the starboard operation has put in the letter to ask us to delay consideration of that until we work out some, some other issues, so. It's fine, it's fine for you to refer to the planning commission. I think that's go, that's fine. They're asking for us to stay consideration. They could, they could lift that request.
Planning zoning. Okay, so we have a motion. That's Mr. Dides.
Okay, I, I believe the planning and zoning commission has one hundred and twenty days to make a decision. It used to be sixty, I believe, and I think we had a change when we were, when I was on the planning commission. That wasn't sufficient time for them to make a proper public hearing. And maybe they might have to send some things back for, for additional information. So I think we already have a timeline established. And I believe if we don't, if the planning commission does not respond within a hundred and twenty days, it's considered to be a favorable recommendation to you all. So I'll double check on that, but I want to look, I can't, I don't have the code in front of me, but I do recall that.
Thank you. I'm, I'm good with the second as it is then.
And the, and the comment that came along with it was that the planning commission would endeavor to get these back to us in sixty days. And that's, that's just fine to add that as a.
So having here a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, that goes to planning and zoning unanimously. Now.
I didn't dismiss anybody.
The bell rang or something?
Recession.
Recession time? They go stretch their legs.
All right.
Send some waning of.
Yeah.
Interest in our deliberations.
All right, let's talk about use of funds. All right, so the next item on the agenda is number eleven. That it's discussed if we vote to approve the application for the annual Dewey sip and shop events submitted by Liam Beach on behalf of the developing artist collaboration. Would you like to make comment?
Who's this Liam Beach?
Hello, it's so nice to see you guys every year on this particular time.
We owe this honor.
Yes, well, well, first off, I can't thank you guys enough for all the support you've given us through other various projects we've done with you this year and over the years with this amazing event. For those of you that aren't familiar with Dewey sip and shop, this started eight years ago, which is crazy, down at the starboard. On Black Friday weekend, I used to do artwork. Monty used to hire me to come to the starboard and do art. And I came up with this crazy idea to bring some artists together in his parking lot on Black Friday weekend. That evolved from about thirty artists to, you know, a couple hundred people coming to now being Delaware's premier holiday shopping experience. Which is incredible, like how proud are we to, you know, for Dewey to be on the map for that? Who knew? So location has definitely been a journey for us because we outgrew the starboard in two thousand and nineteen was our last year, yeah, two thousand and nineteen was our last year there. And then in the pandemic, it just felt best to not have it in Dewey, just with everything going on and finding a space that could accommodate lots of people. So we brought it to the Rohoboth Ale House, which actually Delaware Public Health recognized us as a standard of excellence for putting on an event like that in a pandemic, which was incredible to also carry Dewey's name through that as well. And last year, we brought it back to Dagsworthy Street. We tried it out. That was not the best fit for us just because, for those of you that came, it was super skinny. And we had over five thousand people show up to that event. It was incredible. Our artists just are blown away every year with the, the sales that their businesses bring. We actually are making space for, last year was seventy-eight artists. This year will be potentially a hundred and thirty-two. And, you know, not only that, this has become one of the largest corporate fundraising opportunities for our organization. This brings in over sixty thousand dollars of opportunity for us to sponsorship for us. So we decided it would be best to try to bring it a little further down Dagsworthy to Lions Club parking lot to hopefully for it to be our permanent home. We kind of considered bringing it up maybe potentially to the Rudder parking lot, but in, to honor the businesses. Because I, I can't speak on behalf of enough of the businesses that have just seen a, a transformation on Black Friday weekend for business in Dewey Beach, which has been incredible. So keeping it on this side of town was so important so that, you know, all, most of the businesses, with the exception of Lighthouse, really are all open on this side. So that's why we made our decision to have it in the Lions Club parking lot, which has been approved by their board. They're super enthusiastic to have us. We're excited this year not to have it so close to the houses because last year we felt that a little too close to comfort having it so close to Rainbow Cove. And we had to reach out individually to homeowners and the amount of work that went into that was just, you know, really strenuous. But last year, we also had to close down the road because of foot traffic. This year, because it'll be in Lions Club parking lot, we don't have to close down the road. I got permission from John Snow to use Ivy's parking lot, which I'm sure will get, you know, full because so many folks come through. But we're planning to keep it very similar to the previous year, music being all acoustic, one man act, so we can make sure we're having a nice low noise. Security in our tent at night. We're still going to set it up Wednesday, bring the tent down on Monday. But really, it's going to be kind of the, the same event as usual and we're excited to increase it to more folks. We actually, I, our insurance renews in October, so when we take out the policy for this, I'm going to bump it up to eight thousand this year just to be safe. And our liquor license, we just sent it all through, so ABC should have that turned back to us in the next like two weeks or so, which I can share as well. But besides that, if anyone has any questions, I'd love to, love to hear them.
Commissioners. David.
No, I don't have any questions.
I'd like a motion to approve it.
Second?
My second.
All, all in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Well, this has gotten so much easier over the years. Thank you, Lee.
Uh, eleven B is to discuss possibly vote to approve the application of the end of season party submitted by Dewey Business Partnership.
Hate your name, where you're from.
I just I just wanted to say that uh Leah, your your event obviously is awesome, but we also thank Senator Lopez who paved that road for us so that we do it. No hinting around, but any future senators who may need some help paving roads in this town. Uh, end of the season party. Knowing what a big ordeal this is, if you'd like to disapprove this right now, I'm happy to take it off the agenda, but uh I say that sarcastically every year, Jimmy and I will say that we complained about it for about ten hours as we set up on the beach. And as soon as everybody leaves, we say, man, that was great. I guess we're doing this again next year. And every single person in Dewey absolutely loves it and it's great. And Gary can attest, he usually gets the table, it gets washed out by the ocean. Um, but we our our plans are, let's just call it an heir due to the beach or anything, but our plan is very similar to years past. Town manager and us have talks. We can't commit yet to a street because I think we need to decide that week where it goes. But it's likely going to be in the a little further north than right here. You know, likely going to be in the Swede Street, the New Orleans Street area. Um, we'll likely be pushing it as close to the dams as we can. I looked at the moon phases last night. Uh, and so here now see that we are not in the film in that week, which is nice. And uh we've got our uh friends from Coastal Towing that have been very helpful to make this a better event with their tractors, getting the stages on and off the beach. And we, you know, it's taken ten years. We started doing this at Dewey's twenty-fifth anniversary. Last year was the fortieth anniversary, I believe. Was that last year? So this is forty. So this is sixteen years we've been doing this. And uh, you know, I I think that I don't think there's any questions. I just uh I say it's really a neat thing. It's unfortunate we don't have an election for a second year in a row that we can't celebrate that night, but. Return and uh it all started as a day to kind of bury the hatchet in Dewey. Because election season's never fun in Dewey, no matter how things are. So that's uh it's it's the most unifying event I've ever seen of a town. Um, Dewey's the only one that pulls it off and does it, and we like doing it once it's done.
Thank you for doing this.
I just, in our application, we have a question that says, do you understand no live bands are permitted on the beach? And you answered yes, but.
We.
It could be not the intent. Is that something we need to worry about at all?
I answered yes.
Yes.
Kelly Kelly filled that out for the record.
Yeah, I understand. An application error, but it's consistent with what we had.
Well, yes, I I just found that.
You were.
Yes.
All right.
But does it no live bands on the beach we made your achievements September fifteenth?
No, it doesn't have that. That's with respect to alcohol.
I just was trying to find the whole, you know.
Oh.
Yeah, well, thank you, Monty and Jimmy for putting this on for us every year.
You got it.
Uh, most proof.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass unanimously. All right, moving on, discuss possibly vote to accept the FY twenty twenty-two audit. Here, Ms. Johnson here. Ms. Johnson, please come come forward and present. Get water while you're doing that.
I'm gonna say that I couldn't go to last year's party because I just had knee surgery and I couldn't walk on the beach, so very disappointed about that. Looking forward to this. Um, okay, so the audit has been, all the commissioners, I'm sure have seen it. It it's been posted. I want to just point out a couple of things that I think are great improvements this year, thanks to our fearless leader, our town manager, that our policies and procedure handbook, which was one of the deficiencies that the um audit the auditors pointed out last year, it's being worked on. Um, so I think that's fabulous. Another thing is the fund balance is also, uh I know Gary Persinger has been our fearless leader trying to work on that as as we can. And then the environment, the IT environment, a um security risk assessment has been um authorized to try to take care of those. So those were three things from last year that were noticed by the auditors that there were concerns as far as the environment. So those things are definitely being taken care of. Otherwise, if the Commissioners have any questions for me, I'll do my best to answer them, but I think um the Audit Committee is pleased with the audit. We've been pleased with Cone Resnick for the last several years. And uh my recommendation is for the audit to be approved by the Commissioners.
Commissioner Persinger, you have additional comments?
Yeah, a couple of comments. Um, first of all, thank thank you to the Audit Committee, um for their work again this year. Uh, it really was an extremely smooth process, you know, no problems at all and you know, it really, the audit came out just terrific. Um, and and as Julie said, um the town made progress on some very longstanding recommendations from the auditors. Uh, the ones that you mentioned, certainly IT, uh documenting the procedures that they're using in the accounting department. Um, and also the separation of dues, I think that was one of the others that um finally addressed. That's a longstanding recommendation from yours, going back to the the previous audit, audit firm, um probably, you know, three or four audits that 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 previous audit firm did. Um, one other thing I want to point out, I want to point everyone to my favorite table in the entire audit report. And that's that's page fifteen of the financial statements. Um, and I know you're all scrambling to find it. I know you don't know exactly what I'm talking about.
Fund balance.
But it it shows.
Fun balance.
It shows all the fund balances. Um, it gives you a quick snapshot really of where we are and and how healthy we are as a town right now. And I think it also supports some of the decisions that we have been making, particularly with respect to to capital improvements. Um, you know, the as of March thirty-one, we had two point four million dollars in uh the capital improvement fund. And we voted a couple of months later to to take two point one million of that and apply that toward the town hall. Um, and so I think what the town is doing now is I think they're going to be working toward producing this same kind of uh balance sheet on a continuing basis. It really is a good snapshot. It really tells you exactly where we are. Um, another thing I'll point out, and Julie mentioned this, the uh general fund balance policy. We do have one point, almost two million dollars in our rainy day fund. So if things really get out of control and you know, things go south in terms of revenue, or we have some unanticipated expenditures, we've got some money uh to keep the town going, um as well as almost six hundred thousand dollars in in an assigned fund. I think the auditors uh have told us that we have a little bit more work to do, and I think we need to talk about that. Um, and that is in terms of, you know, where the money comes out first, if there's a particular expenditure. So I think we need to, um perhaps the the town needs to give us some recommendations on on what sort of changes we should make to the fund balance policy, you know, and she know, you know, my government will work to do. But uh, you know, I think we need to have that that conversation and and uh and respond to that that uh comment that we got from the auditors. So I I'll stop there. Again, appreciate your work and congratulations to the town on a very good.
Yeah, Gary, appreciate Julie, appreciate you always stepping up and and always doing a great job and uh and shepherding this process. I know four or five years ago, it was um it was a challenge.
To say the least.
As we continue to move forward, we continue to get better and uh.
Well, I'm sorry.
No, as the as things, but just to to set expectations, the the management letter letter will always have something to show that there needs to be areas of improvement. In fact, that the IT risk is there, in fact, that the fund balance in terms of the mechanisms and how things are doing, those are really minimal things. So congrats, you're congratulations to town for a great operation and for for a successful audit, so.
And and I would say, as you said, uh four years ago, when um our auditors quit on us and we had to scramble to do an RFP to find auditors and Cone Resnick fortunately was able to step in and and do a great job for three years. And I was very pleased when we could rehire them.
Yeah.
For a long-term contract because they've been fantastic. Um, Dan Kenny, who's the managing partner of the group, is um fantastic to work with. So I'm really pleased that we we've reestablished our record with them, so.
Great, great. So can I get a can I get a motion?
Motion.
True.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept the financial year of twenty-two audit.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great job, everyone.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Um, item nine thirteen, discuss possibly vote to amend the investment policy implementation plan and remove equities from the allowable investments in the short-term fund as recommended by the Investment Committee. Commissioner.
Yes.
Givens, would you like to just give us an overview?
So in order to keep us in a good financial situation, the Investment Committee has um recommends that we step back from you allowing any equity investments in our short-term fund, which means we need to both amend our implementation plan and the ordinance in uh chapter twenty-four. So thirteen and fourteen are limited and all it does is takes out equities for um short-term investment. And I want to make it clear on the record that we never had any of our funds in equities during.
So while we made that change a few months back, nothing actually happens.
Correct.
Great. Um, any other discussion around this? Not seeing any. Did I get a a motion to approve?
May I move it since I brought it?
Sure.
I move that we um amend the investment policy implementation plan to remove equities from investments in the short-term fund. Do I have to a second one for the other one?
Yes, everybody, yeah.
Okay, that's my first one.
My second.
Uh, Commissioner Persinger, second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Goes unanimously. Uh, number fourteen, discuss possibly vote to approve the ordinance to amend chapter twenty-four to remove equities from the short-term fund as recommended by the Investment Committee. Commissioner Givens just went through that summary. These are two things that are done in parallel. So could I get a?
I would like to move to amend chapter twenty-four uh to remove the equities from the short-term fund.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Bauer, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. Uh, fifteen, we're already discussed. Number sixteen, review the July uh financial statements. Those over or assault?
Oh.
Do you want to go through? Well, I was, well, uh that you're you are absolutely right, what impression you were under. Um, one of the things I'd asked the Commissioners, just so public record was to do, was to review the financial statements prior to this meeting, uh not knowing how long the meeting was going to go, giving the uh initial use. Uh, we did receive some feedback and will continue to um really amend. It almost follows what Commissioner Persinger was talking about in terms of the mechanics within the funds and have fund balance policy and work towards record record having beginning and ending reconciliation, starting with the audit to to uh to where we are about a monthly basis. Sure. But while you're going up there, but it, I I recommend that everyone look, go go to our go to our website, pull down the financial statements, get familiar with. Um, town is very fortunate. It is having another good year and uh and we're gonna, we're gonna hopefully continue that way. Ms. Hall.
Yes, um afternoon. I, we got our quarterly, our first quarter review back from the outside accounting firm. They said they had a couple of questions and it had to do with the last minute changes of the beach tax back and forth from the audit. They said everything else looks great. We're following. I'm meeting with them hopefully next week or the following week to start on the process of setting up the uh statements so that everything flows. I'm waiting to hear a meeting, talking with Ryan from Cone Resnick next week to, I had a couple of questions on the journal entries so we can finalize the year end, get everything done on that. I'm also starting, because I'm a little nuts, gathering data to start on the next budget. Um. Commissioner Jazinski got me thinking last year and I want to, I'm going to be having at least three to five years' worth of data to substantiate everything that I promote as far as hours for seasonals, as far as revenue streams, so that hopefully what I'm presenting, there's a little bit of understanding on it. Starting in October after we've hit our six-month mark.
Wonderful. Um, the the only, in addition, uh what when you are working with forecast and I I and I think it's it's we've said this before to just make it a little clearer, having those fund balance reconciliations where we see the set of sites coming out, expenses going out, you're getting balanced plus money at the end. I just think that's going to help, at least from our perspective, to see everything. So as you're working with them on building, reporting, just consider that as in addition to.
Yes, I'm looking, I'm hoping to be able to, instead of giving spreadsheets each month, to give you a nice composite uh packet. And I'm also looking to do the budget as a little bit differently so that you have a packet not fully where Rehoboth and some of the other towns are, but something with input from each of the department heads as to why they want us to do stuff. They're looking to do stuff, where they've been, where they're looking to go, so that we can have a more educated budget process.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any?
Thank you, Sheena.
All right, moving on, town manager comments.
Again, I'm I'm impressed with the new uh webpage uh provoked the police in for the town. If you look on there under spotlight on the webpage that we've done for the town website, there's actually a piece on there for hurricane safety information. We are in August. We're getting ready to come up on, and it goes through a number of different things. It lists out evacuation order, procedures for that, survival kits, um you know, property inventory, hurricane warning, hurricane watch. And it also provides information, critical numbers to the police department, Sussex County EMS, state police. And there's also an area on the Delaware Emergency Notification System where they can actually go in and register that they receive updates through email. I think that's the where we want to be moving with our webpages going in the future.
I think it looks great.
Yeah.
It's a lot easier to navigate.
Yeah.
It is great.
Uh. Police chief comments?
Um, we are receiving, uh our vendor has received the uh radios that we purchased with our RPP funds from the county. Uh, just to refresh your memory, we invested fifty-five thousand dollars of that, those funds into new radios and new port. First to improve communication with dispatch. Uh, right now, they're being programmed and better late than never. We could hopefully have them before Labor Day. Uh, the police department received a fifteen hundred dollar uh donation uh from a fundraiser that the Rhode Beach Lee B. Chamber of Commerce uh conducted in the spring with area restaurants and first responders.
Wonderful. All right. Uh, Commissioner comments, Commissioner Bauer.
Uh, I want to recognize a distinguished guest we have here in the back of the room today, our representative. You're going to point to each other, Representative Steve Speck, who uh is running for Senate. So thank you for uh coming here and seeing what we're doing here in Dewey Beach and hopefully you become our senator.
Right, um Commissioner Givens.
This has been said several times today, but last Friday, um I came to the town manager and said, I could not believe how gorgeous our uh webpage look. The drone stuff, everything is amazing. He says, okay, hey, thank you so much for doing it. It makes such positive impression for the town. Um, and I I look forward to the the police one working just as well because they don't yet. Um, and uh it looks good. It just doesn't link up when I tried to find people. Um, and I also um thank you so much, town manager, for following up on the mats on the um dunes. You know, that's one of the things that I had been agitating about and I was jumped up and down because I was so excited to hear that's going to happen. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Jazinski.
Uh, just want to commend all the town staff, police, lifeguards, et cetera. Uh, it's been another great summer. You guys are just all doing a great job.
Commissioner Persinger.
I'm just going to note that I have all of these that the town has dumped on you, not, no, has given me provided to you so that we can have a good discussion about uh the P and the um conditional use applications. I am going, unless somebody really wants a set of paper, I'm going to just give them back to the town so that they can use it in future P and Z hearings or a future um town condition.
Wonderful.
That's all I have.
Uh, I just had uh one comment and I'll ask, uh let's build a correct me if I'm wrong. Um, but I believe that the uh the Dewey Beach lifeguards went out to Long Beach, California and um I think they've got five gold medals.
Yeah.
In in the ninety-meter relay.
In the one hundred meter relay in the beach.
This is the, and uh so total of eight medals. So little Dewey Beach got eight medals at uh from national basis, so good job, guys. Um, with that, I have no other comments and can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous.
I would have never believed would be out there at four forty-nine.
Yes.